And we are now live, Madam Chair, if you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Very good. I call this meeting of the Arapahoe County Planning Commission of October 20th of 2020 to order. And we will now call the roll. I believe we have our quorum.
Yeah, Chair Rick.
Present.
Chair Protem Latsis.
Present.
Commissioner Brockelman.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Saul.
Present.
Commissioner Savey.
Present.
Commissioner Wolman.
Present.
We have seven members of the Planning Commission present this evening, and as the Chair mentioned, we do have a quorum. Good evening, Commissioner's staff, citizens and guests. I'm Jason Reynolds with Arapahoe County Planning, and I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's online meeting of our Planning Commission. We are streaming this meeting on our website, arapahoe.gov.com. The agenda tonight will be handled in the same way it would be handled for a regular in-person meeting. You may stream the meeting on our website or call in to participate. Please be aware that the website broadcast is delayed by 20 to 30 seconds. So if you would like to speak regarding a public hearing item this evening, please use the call-in number. To participate live via phone, call 719-569-5048. And when prompted, enter the conference ID 306-524-291, followed by the pound sign. All presentation PowerPoints are available on our website. So even if you participate by telephone, you can still download the PowerPoints and follow along live with the presenters. Chair Rick, please proceed with the approval of the minutes.
Okay, we have one set of minutes to approve from the October 6th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. If there are any changes to the minutes, then please include those changes in your motion, and I will accept a motion to approve the minutes unless we have any suggested alterations.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Wolman. I'd like to move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 6th, 2020.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolman. Do we have a second for approving the minutes?
Commissioner Latsis will second.
Commissioner Latsis has seconded the motion made by Commissioner Wolman. Any discussion? Otherwise, Mr. Reynolds, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brockelman.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Saul.
Aye.
Commissioner Savey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolman.
Aye.
Chair Protem Latsis.
Aye.
Chair Rick.
Aye.
The minutes are approved on a vote of seven to zero. The public is invited to participate in the public hearing this evening. And if you would like to comment on the public hearing item, please call 719-569-5048. And when prompted, enter the conference ID 306-524-291, followed by the pound sign. I will call on individual telephone numbers after the Planning Commission Chair opens the public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Planning Commission on the topic after the staff presentation. The applicant and staff will respond to any questions after all members of the public have spoken. Some of the public hearing items are quasi-judicial in nature. In order to afford all parties due process under law, the Planning Commission members must be fair and impartial in deciding whether those applications should be approved, approved with conditions, or denied. In making that determination, each member of the Planning Commission must consider the record, which includes the staff recommendation, the applicant presentation, public comments presented during the hearing, and other written public comments offered before or during the hearing. Under law, a planning commission must evaluate the proposals based entirely upon the record and the criteria established under the Land Development Code. Those criteria are highlighted in the staff report. It is important that each Planning Commission member remain objective and capable of considering information offered into the record during this hearing. Does any Planning Commission member believe that he or she is incapable of evaluating and voting on the application in an unbiased and objective manner? Believe that they may have a conflict of interest? Or have any other matter that he or she would like to disclose prior to proceeding with the public hearing for the public hearing item on tonight's agenda? Hearing no disclosures, I will turn this over to the Chair.
Okay, tonight we have one public hearing item. The Planning Commission will now consider a proposed planned unit development zoning case SDP-Z20-004, the Comcast parking lot specific development plan. And Kat Hammer with the County Planning is the staff presenter. Ms. Hammer, please begin.
Good evening, Chair. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Please note that this agenda item has been properly noticed, and the PC has jurisdiction to proceed in making recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to start sharing the screen here, so just give me a minute here. Okay, I have provided a PowerPoint as part of the agenda. And on page two, you'll see the slide that is titled Proposal. Doug Porter, who is the manager of Real Estate Comcast West Division, on behalf of the property owner Comcast ABB Network Solutions, is proposing a surface parking lot to serve the Comcast building in the Isle of Business Park, which is directly north of this proposed site. The proposal includes approximately 200 parking spaces, circulation aisles, two access points, one from South Trenton and the other from East Harvard, pardon me. And the proposal also includes lighting and landscaping and three rain gardens to provide stormwater quality. On page three of the presentation titled Proposal Vicinity Map, you will see a map of the site highlighted in red and the zoning for sites adjacent and in close proximity to this site. To the north is the East Islelift Business Park office buildings that we spoke about earlier. And this proposal will be providing parking for one of the buildings that is located up north there. To the east is the Cherry Creek Greenway, and across the greenway is multifamily, which is not included in a subdivision. To the south, there are single-family and multifamily homes and is part of the Highland Glen subdivision. And to the west are more office buildings part of the Islelift Business Park. On page four, you'll see a slide that's titled Process. This application does qualify for the two-step PUD process. If this proposal is approved by the VOCC, it will establish zoning for this parcel. And if approved, the applicant will need to submit for an administrative site plan and receive approval from staff prior to any building permits being issued. On slide five, titled Background. The parcel is approximately 4.5 acres, currently zoned I-1, and is currently vacant. The four-square-mile subarea plan designates this land as suitable for employment uses, and the parcel is part of the Islelift Business Park subdivision approved by the county in 1982. On slide six, titled Discussion: Comprehensive Plan and LDC. As stated in the staff report, the proposal meets a number of policies and goals outlined in the comprehensive plan, the four-square-mile subarea plan, and the criteria required for approval of an SDP to establish zoning. On slide seven, titled Discussion: External Referrals. The external referral comments for this proposal can be found on page six of the staff report that was attached to the agenda. Tri-County House did provide a recommendation to consider internal pedestrian walkways or sidewalks. Pedestrian circulation is provided and shown on the plan, and the applicant is encouraging pedestrians to use the sidewalks that are proposed along the perimeter of the site. Pavement markings will be considered at the time of construction if deemed necessary during the final site planning, and signage may also be added during the final site planning to the direct pedestrians to the main Comcast building and walkways. Staff has reviewed all the other referral agency responses and the applicant's response to those comments, and believes all requests have been satisfied from external referrals. On slide eight, titled Staff Findings and Recommendation. Staff finds that the proposal generally conforms to the Arapahoe County Comprehensive Plan as well as the four-square-mile subarea plan. And staff also finds that the proposal meets the Arapahoe County zoning regulations and procedures for a planned unit development. That being said, staff is recommending approval of case SDP-Z20-004 Comcast Accessory Parking Lot Specific Development Plan, subject to one condition of approval. That can be found in the staff report. On slide nine, titled Specific Development Plan, Step Two of the Three-Step PUD Process. The Planning Commission has four options in regard to the SDP application. The Planning Commission may recommend approval of the application with staff recommended conditions of approval. This Planning Commission may recommend approval of the application with revised conditions of approval. The Planning Commission may recommend denial, and the Planning Commission may also continue the public hearing to another date if necessary. I stand for any questions you may have, and there are two applicants who are on the line who represent the applicant. There are two people on the line who represent the applicant. They do not have a formal presentation, but I do believe they have a few words to say to the Planning Commissioners.
Well, they can go ahead, and then we'll ask questions when they've completed.
Okay, we have on the line Doug Porter and Chris Day. So I believe it's star three to unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Doug Porter. Thank you for presenting that cat. I represent Comcast, a real estate manager for West Division. And we are looking to improve a property that has been vacant and undeveloped for many years to accessorize our parking over at the Islelift facility to accommodate additional employees that we intend to hire in the near future. We currently have a parking situation that only allows 522 parking spots, and our capacity in the building is over 1,000. So I believe this would allow us to bring more jobs into the county and our facility.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody up? I guess I'll go back and ask the Planning Commission if they have any questions of staff at this point. Any questions?
No, ma'am.
No.
I guess I was curious why the variance was granted for the four-foot-wide sidewalk. And maybe that's going to improve the current conditions there. It seems unusually narrow.
I could speak to that a little bit, but I'll ask Chuck to confirm. It's my understanding that there were, when the applicant came in for pre-submitting, improvements to Harvard were not planned or were not constructed. After the applicant submitted their application with, I believe it was originally a five-foot-wide sidewalk, improvements to East Harvard had occurred. And the engineering department determined that waiving that five-foot minimum requirement was something to keep good faith because of those improvements on East Harvard.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm also curious about the security that will be offered, or is that just a reflection of the neighborhood where it is, or is there something else?
So the applicant has indicated that they will have patrols, or somebody will be patrolling that parking lot. I'll ask them to touch more on that subject if necessary.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission? And we have heard from the applicant, so I will ask, I guess I'm going to go through the list of you one by one, and you have another chance to ask a question of the applicant or for staff. Commissioner Brockelman.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
I have no questions at this time.
Commissioner Saul.
No questions at this time.
Savey.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Wolman.
No questions.
And Commissioner Latsis.
No questions at this time.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and our moderator will call on individual telephone numbers to participate in the hearing. As a reminder, if you have questions, we will collect those, and the applicant or staff will respond after all callers have offered their comments. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. We do currently have callers on the line. And there is one caller who is not represented by a Planning Commissioner or the applicant. And that caller has the last four digits of the phone number, 8248. Caller with the last four digits, 8248, you are not muted. And if you would like to speak, you may begin doing so. You will have three minutes to comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Roger Smith, and I am a owner in Howell Construction, which is the property immediately to the west of the proposed site across South Trenton. And we just want to say that we support this development. That lot has been an eyesore. We have a lot of views out that direction to the east from our office property, and we maintain our property in very nice condition. And we very much would like to see the landscaping as well as the lighting and its security patrolled as discussed to improve our neighborhood. So we, as probably the nearest neighbor and the one that sees this lot the most, we full-heartedly support the project.
Very good. Thank you.
That is the last caller.
Okay, I guess we have already heard from the applicant and staff. If there are any additional comments that anybody would like to make at this point. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and will bring this item to the Planning Commission for a motion and discussion. And if there are any additional questions before I call for a motion on this specific development plan with zoning. If there aren't any other questions, we will proceed to accept a motion regarding the proposal. Anybody willing?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Wolman. I would like to make a motion in the case of SDP-Z20-004 Comcast Accessory Parking Lot Specific Development Plan. The Planning Commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public's comment as presented at the public hearing. I hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to condition number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolman. Do we have a second for the motion?
Commissioner Brockelman, seconds.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockelman. We have the motion made by Commissioner Wolman, seconded by Commissioner Brockelman. Is there any further discussion? And Mr. Reynolds, then, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brockelman.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Saul.
Aye.
Commissioner Savey.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolman.
Aye.
Commissioner Latsis.
Aye.
And Chair Rick.
Aye.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. This concludes our public hearing items, and the public is invited to listen to our study session. However, no comments will be taken during this study session. We will now hold the session regarding proposed updates to our energy regulations for oil and gas in Arapahoe County. Our presenter tonight is Diane Kousis. Diane, please begin. And welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners and guests. Tonight, we're going to share with you our oil and gas regulations process and our draft regulations. Before I leave the introductory slide, I want to check if anybody has any questions from the PowerPoint that I sent last week that I call my Oil and Gas 101 PowerPoint.
This is Commissioner Savey, and I do have a question for you, Diane. Not being at all familiar with oil and gas production, I just wanted to understand, is it common in most of these production situations that it's a 24/7 operation, or what are the typical hours of operation?
Yes.
I'm having difficulty understanding, Commissioner Savey.
Shall I repeat?
No. Did you change something?
Okay, after they construct the pad and the access road, and they do that during daylight hours, when drilling and fracking commences, those are 24/7 operations. They can't really stop drilling once drilling starts, or the hole would collapse, or the hole would become too wide, making it difficult to properly cement the hole. And the same goes for fracking, to a large extent. They put the tools down at the furthest extent of the lateral hole that they've drilled, and they frac a series of intervals from that toe up to the vertical part of the well. And so that goes on pretty much 24/7. The actual fracturing of the rock at below 7,000 feet does not have a sound at the surface, but the noisiest part of the entire operation is fracking, and it's the pump trucks and the fans at the surface that make the most noise. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure. Does anybody else have any questions about protections in place for water or Senate Bill 181, or anything else that I had in that presentation?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, then we'll move forward with tonight's study session. So the goals of the study session are to summarize the board direction that we've received so far for our draft oil and gas rules, to inform you on the elements of our working draft oil and gas rules, and to obtain input on the outlined considerations. After a quick review of the direction we've received so far from the board, we'll proceed through the draft rule elements, and they've been divided into four categories: health and safety, process improvements, operations, and quality of life. Bear in mind that we're using the following criteria for drafting rules, and the criteria were approved by the board: public impact, alignment with state rules, best management practices, otherwise known as BMPs, industry impact, and impact to county resources. So regarding the quality of life direction the board has given us, we told them probably about a year ago now that we wanted to draft rules for noise, light, visual mitigation, traffic, and setbacks. Noise is the most frequent complaint we get from nearby residents. The lights are very bright, and so that's also a common complaint. And traffic, it probably comes in as the second or third complaint. In the bottom row there, you'll see that we've proposed a setback of 1,000 feet from the edge of a pad to a property line of the nearest occupied building. Since we've drafted our rules, the State Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is actually considering a 2,000-foot setback that has rooms for exceptions to it. And I just want to mention that either, when there is a difference between a state rule and a county rule, the stricter of the two rules would apply. But that's sort of off-topic as far as direction we've received. So moving on to direction that we've received for health and safety, we told the board that citizens wanted us to regulate at some level air quality issues associated with oil and gas operations. And the board gave us two reasons why we shouldn't proceed with air quality rules. One of the reasons was that the State Health Department, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, would be updating their air quality rules, and in fact, they've already done that. And those are their air quality rules specific to oil and gas operations. So they've made their rules even stricter. They were already some of the strictest rules in the entire country, and now they're stricter. And the other reason the board didn't want us to pursue air quality regulations is because the county does not have an air quality expert. Air quality rules are extremely complicated. So then, moving on in the list for health and safety, we told the board that we wanted to have emergency response plans or emergency action plans at the time of the initial application. Historically, we got those plans months or even years after the facility was already in operation. We told the board that we would provide the industry with a template that they could use for the emergency response plans, and then they could, after GIS data was available after the pad was constructed, they could provide a more detailed ERP or EAP. We told them that we wanted to require some sort of lightning mitigation because it's not uncommon for lightning to strike tanks on a pad. And then after a tank ignites, it's common for the neighboring tanks to also go up in flames. And the smoke from a burning crude or even a burning produced oil tank is really impactful. We wanted firefighting supplies on the site or near the site, water and foam, that foam approved by the fire district to be stored nearby. We wanted coordinated training between the operators and our emergency responders. We wanted to get that set up prior to drilling and thereafter, regular intervals to be determined. We wanted the operators to report all facility incidents to emergency responders, and those incidents would include spills, releases, fires, explosions, lightning strikes, accidents, chemical exposures. And then setbacks actually apply to quality of life and health and safety. And our emergency responders were very supportive of a 1,000-foot setback from the edge of the pad to the property line of the nearest occupied building, so that that would give them room to respond to an emergency. And then we also told the board that while this would not go into the oil and gas rules, it would go elsewhere in the Land Development Code, that we felt strongly that we should have some sort of reverse setback. That would be the setback between an existing oil and gas facility and a newly planned occupied building. We proposed several different reverse setback distances, and the board voted amongst themselves to give us direction forward for 250 feet. And then for process improvements, we told them that we would like the operators to have neighborhood meetings pretty much at the time of application with the county and to provide more notice for applications. Currently, under our rules, the applicant of an oil and gas facility need only provide notice to the adjacent property owners. But we feel that oil and gas operations affect more than the adjacent parcels, so we want a notice to be sent to residents. This slide is actually slightly outdated. Our working draft rules has a provision for notification to residents within one mile. And we've gotten citizen input on that, where citizens feel that that radius should be extended to two or even three miles. Recordation, we would like the approvals to be recorded. We had an instance where we approved an oil and gas pad, and at the time, Conoco was the main op. was the main operator in the county. And they went to that pad two or three years later to, because they had scheduled a rig and intended to start working on it, and they found that somebody had constructed a trailer on that site, pretty much in the center of where they planned to put the pad. And we feel that if the record, if the approvals were recorded at the clerk and recorder's office, we might avoid that sort of situation in the future. And it would be PWD, Public Works Staff, that would do the recordation with the clerk and recorder's office. Under expiration, currently, our approvals expire after five years if a facility has not been, if construction has not been commenced on that pad. And we are proposing that the expiration, that the approval expires in three years, because the character of a neighborhood could really change in, in less than five years. There could be a greater density of, of homes in that area. And then, alternative locations, that was something that was very much requested by some residents, also known as an ALA, and the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is currently in rulemaking on several topics, and that's one of them. The board told us that they didn't want us to proceed with alternative location analysis, but we've continued to dialogue with them. Right now, our draft rules only have a requirement for ALAs if the pad is proposed on county So, how we'll do the rest of the slides is, you know, they've been broken into topics, and some of the topics require more than one slide. And I, I want to advise you that, you know, the tables are really a summary of our rules, and we've got a more complete set of our rules in the working draft regulations available on the oil and gas website. And to keep things better organized tonight, we'll request your input at the end of each category. So, now, we're going to start with the health and safety rules. We have four slides for health and safety. We have drafted a requirement for both emergency action plans and tactical response plans. Both of these plans were requested by our emergency responders, our Office of Emergency Management, Bennett Watkins Fire Rescue, who, which is the fire district for most of the oil and gas locations. And, and I'm trying to think, one other agency requested that we do that. And you can see that an emergency action plan, by looking at the third column, is something that other jurisdictions have either drafted rules for, or they have existing rules for requiring these. Really, also has a requirement for a tactical response plan. That's a plan that would set up the command structure for a response to an incident. We've also drafted a requirement for emergency access hardware that would aid the emergency responders getting access to a site if it was locked. The emerg, we want emergency act evacuation routes to be established, and actually, that provision would actually occur inside the emergency action plan or the tactical response plan. A hazardous materials inventory, our emergency responders ask for that as well. We are, we have a, in the drafted rules, we have a prohibition of storage of hazardous or floatable material, floatable materials in floodplains. We have a requirement for a list of onsite chemicals, because that information would be critical for emergency responders. And we've also drafted a requirement for inspections by fire districts and county staff, and two other jurisdictions have that requirement, Adams County and Bloomfield. And then, our second to last slide on health and safety. For safety purposes, we want signs at all well paths that would allow emergency responders' verification that they arrived at the correct facility. We want damage to county infrastructure caused by the operator's emergencies to be the responsibility of the operator. That would relieve the county of potential expenses. We want coordinated training between the fire districts and our Office of Emergency We want certificates of completion of FEMA NIMs training. This is something that was heavily suggested by our emergency responders, and Adams County also has that requirement. And we want the operators to follow the fire codes and standards of the local fire district office. There's been some confusion in the past as to what code they would use, but for instance, if they're within the fire district for Bennett Watkins Fire District, the operator would be obliged to follow the, the rules and codes of the Bennett Watkins Fire Rescue Department. And then, we'd like the operators to store water and foam near the pads to aid in firefighting. We want incident reports of all these different kinds of incidents: spills, releases, fires, explosions, lightning strikes, accidents, fatalities, injuries, chemical exposures, and any events requiring medical attention. Spill reporting, any report that would be required by the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, we want to be filed with us also. And that would be information that we could discuss at an annual meeting with operators. We want operators to report spills of all flammable, flammable materials of five gallons or more. Our emergency responders have said that that would be helpful information to them if they have to respond to a site emergency. And we want spill response kits to be carried by the field staff of the operator or to be stored at each pad. Those would be absorbent materials that could aid in stopping small spills from spreading further. Did I hear a question? Okay. So here we have our last slide for health and safety. As I mentioned, we've drafted a setback rule for 1,000 feet from the edge of the pad to the nearest property. And that setback rule includes a, a minimum of 250 feet from the property line. And that's a little bit confusing, so we have some slides that we'll jump to now to illustrate our setback rules. Oh, and here's, here's just a quick summary. Again, 1,000 feet from the edge of the pad to the nearest occupied structure, or 1,000 feet from the edge of the pad to the boundary of the nearest platted lot, and 250 feet from the boundary of an adjacent parcel, and a 250-foot reverse setback. No new structures within 250 feet of an existing oil and gas pad. So the first photograph here is the simplest case, no pads within 1,000-foot circle, that's 1,000 feet from the edge of the pad in either direction. Then the next slide shows what would happen if we had a reverse setback of 250 feet. In many cases, the owner of a small parcel would be burdened by a reverse setback, because they wouldn't be able to build within 250 feet of the edge of a pad. So that, this orange area illustrates the buildable area for the owner of an adjacent small parcel. But the next slide shows that if the operators are required to construct a pad with 250 feet of separation between the pad and the next nearest parcel, that allows the owner of a small parcel, shown in orange up above, that allows that parcel owner to build on their entire parcel, except for the setbacks that would be applicable. But it opens up a lot more of their parcel for, for them to build on. So then, going back to the table in Slide 11. The operator shall maintain a 350-foot setback from buried infrastructure. I drafted that rule based on information that we had from Bloomfield, where they discovered that there was buried infrastructure related to pads that had been abandoned and torn down years ago that was still on the ground, that hadn't been abandoned properly, and, and there was flow lines and pipelines associated with some of those facilities. And so, they recommended a 350-foot setback from buried infrastructure. However, when we had a meeting with industry, they explained to us that this really isn't workable, because it's really common for operators to share the same easements when they install pipelines and other kinds of infrastructure such as flow lines. So we're going to be modifying that in the future. This is how it appears in our draft rule right now, but, but we're going to work with industry to come up with a modification for that one. And then, the last one, operators shall provide maps of all off-pad flow lines. This turns out to be very complicated also, because the, the reason behind this rule was we were trying to avoid the kind of situation that resulted in Firestone from an explosion where a flow line was severed and leaked, and leaked into the, into the basement, methane leaked into the basement of an adjacent home, and, and then caused a severe explosion. But our operators are telling us that they would like us to hold that information confidential if they provided the flow line maps. However, under Cora, we would have to reveal that information if we received it. So this is something that we're also going to meet with industry about and try to refine this rule a bit. I guess we're ready for Slide 16. Do any of you have any questions regarding the health and safety rules, or do you have any changes that you would recommend for our draft health and safety rules?
Commissioner Laster, I have a couple of questions. So I guess my first question would apply to most of the sections, but, but, like, for example, on the emergency evacuation routes, I know in previous cases, I think it was Prosper, actually, where we had talked about evacuation routes, especially in proximity to residential or, you know, existing occupied buildings, that they had to have two routes to get in and out of a drilling site. Is, so is that level of detail going to be contained in, you know, a deeper dive kind of document than this, or are those things still being worked out?
This is Jason. I muted Diane because she was causing an echo when you spoke. So I'll give her a moment to unmute herself, so she can talk again.
All right. I was starting to explain without, without being unmuted. Yes, this is something that has come up in the past, the fact that two neighborhoods out east only had one route in and out of their safe subdivision. So, this is something that would be addressed in either the emergency action plan or the tactical response plan. This is something that the operators and our emergency responders would, would work out together.
Okay, so there's not going to be a standard, like, all sites must have two points of, you know, egress or to evacuate. It's, it's dependent on, like, Bennett could say one thing, South Metro could say one thing, so it's not going to be a standard. Is that correct?
Um, I, I would have to say from, from working with our emergency responders, that they're pretty much in agreement on every single issue that we've raised with them. So I would expect they would all have the same standard.
Okay, but it's not required?
No, not, not at this point, but that's something that we can bring up with them.
Yeah, I guess that one would make me a little uncomfortable, because that could be, you know, that could be a, a real problem if one person said, oh, one access point's fine, and then they have the accident out there, and it, you know, basically doesn't allow people to evacuate. But, you know, that's, that's one thought I, or question I had or concern. My other question, and, you know, I think it's a good idea to shorten the timeline to three years from five as far as taking action on a permit. But what happens, so let's say, like you said, things change quickly, they have a permit on a site, and then somebody builds something next to it, how does that whole setback thing work? I mean, it could negate their ability to work on the site, and they have a permit. Is it, is the recordation supposed to address that, or, you know, because certainly in three years, if somebody owns an adjacent parcel and they sell it to a developer, it could be off and running by the time the, you know, the operator decides to come in. So how will those setbacks be addressed and enforced?
That, that is a really good question, because the situation I described, where somebody constructed a trailer on a site where Conoco had planned to put a pad, that happened on the site itself. The property was sold, and the former owner did not inform the new, the purchaser that, that there was an oil and gas pad approved for that site. But I don't think we've actually considered that there would be a conflict due to construction on an adjacent parcel.
Right, yeah, because your one picture where you showed it, kind of shoving the buildable envelope off to the, the north, or, you know, that one, suggested to me, well, that could really, that could happen if the person on that parcel, you know, had gone through the process and was able to build, you know, there could be a, a permanent home, not a trailer, with foundation, et cetera, you know, in direct conflict with that pad.
Uh huh.
Especially if they take three years, you know? So I'm just curious how that's going to be monitored.
I can address that if you like.
Sure.
This is Bob.
Hi, Bob.
The, first of all, the reverse setback would be intended to prohibit that property from going in, but even if it doesn't, you know, forever, it doesn't get recorded, or the pad's not there, and there's no reason to believe it, once the pad has been permitted at its location, if someone builds with it, it will have been required to meet the setback at the time the permit was approved. And if someone comes after the fact and puts a property within that setback, that wouldn't inhibit the developer or the oil and gas from going forward, in my mind anyhow.
Okay, so if someone violated that, you know, assuming the recordation is all in place, and they would have to essentially, you know, demo their building?
Yeah, we probably, it would probably be on the county to catch that at the building permit stage with the recorded approval, and we would hopefully theoretically anyhow say, you know, sorry, you can't build there, you're within the reverse setback, assuming a reverse setback's been adopted.
Right. Interesting. You might have to require title searches before permit from everybody.
So, so Bob, this is Commissioner Wallman. I mean, it seems to me, if you're having the requirement that the permit be recorded, that anyone who's out there who's adjacent, as Catherine has said, would, instead of putting the onus on the county to do that search, I would like to see the onus put on the, on the developer of the adjacent property to do that. I mean, I'm just looking at it from an expense, you know, an expense, time management, resource kind of situation.
Yeah, well, to me, it's kind of an interesting title situation, because you would typically do a title search on your property, and I don't know that you would have a mechanism to pick up something on an adjacent property.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I understand that. That's not usually the typical thing, when somebody goes, you know, to, to develop an area of whatever nature. And I don't know whether, you know, if something's obviously, you know, not developed, it's not like, you know, the, the developer can get a visual cue as to what is going on on an adjacent property. an adjacent property.
I do think that will be caught at the building permit stage generally, assuming they get a building permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Diane is muted again, just FYI. And the echo is coming from Commissioner Wallman.
Okay. If there's no further questions about the health and safety drafted rules, we'll go on to the operational requirements. The first three of these rules relate to secondary containment. EPA has rules that are, are now enforced by, by Colorado, the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission for secondary containment so that if a tank was to leak, that the contents of the largest tank would be contained within that secondary containment. And that's the case for the large storage tanks on site and the smaller tanks also. So we're going to flip to two pictures to illustrate this. On the left, you can see along the bottom that, well, along the bottom third of the photo, that, that there is a steel wall. And that wall has attached to it a synthetic liner. And that containment is designed to cover an area and a height that provides the containment of the volume of the largest tank in, inside that secondary containment. That's the EPA, EPA rule that we now have jurisdiction over. That is what you commonly see in Arapahoe County. However, on the right, this photo actually on the right was not taken in Arapahoe County, but the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission permits these berm's to be built out of compacted dirt. And then the, the newest trend is to armor these compacted dirt berm's with cobbles to make them more resistant to being worn down by wind and rain and, and snow. Because if an earthen berm is weathered and it's reduced in height, its capacity to hold the volume of the largest tank would be compromised. So we had never really considered, prior to talking to COGCC, we'd never really considered moving forward with earthen berm's, but they have assured us that these armored berm's are just as effective as the steel berm's. And then the next picture, this shows secondary containment around small tanks. So on the left, this type of tank would be used to store ethylene glycol at, at a oil and gas pad. And the, the photo on the right is containment for lubricating oil on a site. So we can go back to slide 17. There we go. Moving down to the fourth row, new technologies required if new technologies for surface operations are technologically sound, economically practical, and reasonably available to the operator. We like that rule. We saw it in Aurora's proposed rules and also in Broomfield's. And this is something that we would discuss at an annual meeting with the operators. And then untreated produced water will not be used for dust control. This hasn't been done widely, but we want to get this codified to make sure it, it doesn't happen. Because produced water contains hydrocarbons and, and a high concentration of dissolved solids which can contaminate soil adjacent to roads and then the vegetation will die. And three other jurisdictions have this kind of rule. And then facilities located outside of flood, floodplains unless no other sites can be reasonably used. Just in the past week with internal discussions, we've decided not to allow facilities in floodplains at all. So do you have any questions or input on the draft operational rules?
Yes, Commissioner Lattes again. Yeah, having worked with the SEMSA, with SEMSA at the county, one question that occurs to me is, are any perimeter BMPs required? You know, because I know we're talking about making them do fencing and a lot of these pictures don't show fencing. Do they have to put any straw waddles or anything around the perimeter of these sites to make sure nothing leaves their site and goes into the adjacent, you know, properties or, you know, landscaping, et cetera? Because right now I could see a tank would have to be contained, but, you know, the overall site, generally in construction, we have to contain the entire site. So I was just curious if there's anything for that.
We do address those, those provisions to make sure that stormwater and other fluids don't get off the site in our GESC rules, the grating, erosion, and sediment control rules. So those are engineering standards.
Okay. Great. So that's, that's part of their whole permitting process then?
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions about the operation rules? Okay. If none, then we can go on to slide 21. Process improvements. A lot of these are things that we've had on our wish list for years while we were operating under the MOU system, the memorandum of understanding. We had things come up during the seven years where, where all we had to regulate was the MOU because local governments did not have control. And neighborhood meetings is something that we encouraged operators to have if they had a controversial site, but this would codify that requirement. And then, as I mentioned before, written notification of the application for all landowners of record and HOAs within one mile. We may expand that one mile radius to, to two miles based on citizen input. Signposting at the time of application. We can flip to slide 22 to show an example of a sign, a sign that Conoco erected. We did not have it in our rules that the applicant would have to post a sign at the time they filed an application with us. But Conoco worked with us on that and was willing to construct a sign each time they submitted an application. So that worked out well, but that needed to be codified in our rules. Next is waiver requests. Our rules are being written with a tiered approach so that sites located near neighborhoods or sites with above a certain level of number of wells or tanks on them would have, would be subject to more mitigations than sites that are very remote or sites that only have one or two wells and a limited number of tanks and other equipment on site. So the waiver request process works for, for the tiered, the tiered process. So waiver examples would be setbacks, neighborhood meetings, annual meetings between the operator and the county, termination date of approval, visual mitigations, noise mitigation, and lightning mitigations. An example could be that if a property is, that is proposed for a pad is a large property and the owner of, of that property doesn't want visual mitigations to be placed or has no issues with the, with the sounds that, that have been provided in the, the sound modeling plans that operators do. If, if that service owner doesn't want these provisions, then that, they would be waived. And the waiver process would be that these things would be approved by the Director of Public Works. Operators are very, very happy with this proposed rule and citizens have some reservations about it. But two other jurisdictions have this kind of a process. Regular meetings, at least annually, we're thinking of increasing that to twice annually. That would allow the county to sit down with the operators on, on, on at least a yearly basis and discuss their emergency response plans, their tactical response plans, any health and safety issues that have occurred through the year, and potential implementation of new technology. Technology is always evolving, so we'd like the chance to discuss it at least every year. And that leads us to the row right below. New technologies required if the service operations are technologically sound, economically practical, and reasonably available to the operator. And that was taken pretty much from Aurora's draft rules. Revocation of approval. This would be a way for the county to regulate failure to comply with our requirements. And Broomfield has it in their proposed rules. Recordation of approval with the clerk and recorder's office, we've already talked about. And then we've already talked about expiration of approval in three years unless the, unless the facility is substantially commenced. So now on to the quality of life category. And first, we're going to cover noise. As I mentioned, it's the most common complaint that we get from the neighbors of oil and gas facilities. Our residents out east are used to very low levels of noise, especially during the night. And if drilling and fracking is going on near them, even if the sound is within the current state limits, the state is also working on new rules for noise, we, we still get a lot of complaints. And unfortunately, right now, because the state has not yet finished their, their, their rules for noise and the county has not, you know, we're still in this process, there's not a whole lot we can do for people. And low frequency noise is a whole other level of irritation to nearby neighbors. It's estimated that approximately 5% to 6% of the population has a sensitivity to low frequency noise. I believe that estimate to be low because people don't even know they have that sensitivity unless something like this happens near them. And low frequency noise can really be thought of more as a vibration than a noise. So any kind of noise though can really affect the health of, of people suffering from it. And not only would these neighbors be dealing with the noises associated with drilling and fracking, but they'd also be dealing with the noises from truck traffic. And I also want to mention that if a noise is, is occurring at night when people are sleeping, they may not fully wake up and even remember that, that they were struggling with a noise while they were trying to sleep. But just the, the disturbance is going to impact their sleep cycle and it, and it then could lead to health impacts as well. So Broomfield set their nighttime noise limit at 45 decibels. And just for a point of reference, a normal conversation is 60 decibels. So you can imagine conducting drilling and fracking operations and trying to meet a 45-decibel limit is, is, has proven not to be practical. Broomfield's got, got a number of lawsuits in the works right now because of that really low limit. Boulder has a 50-decibel limit, which still really isn't achievable. And Laramore has the same limit. So we've proposed, we originally proposed a 65-decibel limit, but because COGCC is working through rules where 60 decibels would be the nighttime limit, we, we want to, we wanted to revise our rules to reflect that, the, the COGCC rule. And then we, we've drafted a requirement for an ambient noise survey, which could work in the favor of the operators. It may relieve them of some noise mitigation requirements in noisy areas. So if the ambient noise is already considerable in that area, the operator may not be required to do full mitigation for noise. Noise modeling and noise mitigation plans are in our drafted rules. And noise modeling is something that industry does on a pretty regular basis when there's homes in the area. They hire a, a company that specializes in sound and, and noise to, to model the site topographically and predict whether the, the noise generated from either drilling or fracking will exceed the state noise levels. And we, we get copies of those noise modeling plans, but we wanted to codify that. And as I mentioned, we want to address low frequency noise. And we want operators to use the best available technology to reduce noise during drilling and completion. That would include covering noisy equipment, installing mufflers on noisy engines, that, that sort of thing. But recently, and you'll see this in the very last box on the, on the right, quiet technology has been in the news. There's a company called Liberty that I think has bought out Halliburton at this point. And they discovered an innovation for reducing fracking noises, you know, the actual hydraulic fracturing operation. And the, the operator in Arapahoe County who took over from Conoco is Creston Peak Resources. And they plan on using this quiet technology. So that will definitely reduce the mid-range noise frequencies. And then on to other noise mitigations. We've drafted a requirement for electric drilling or production equipment where the equipment and power are available. Unfortunately, there are parts in the county where electric power would not be available. And sometimes an operator might not be able to acquire the services of a company with an electric drilling rig. But I think those are going to become more and more available as time goes on. And several other jurisdictions have required or are proposing a rule for electric drilling or production equipment. No unloading of tubular goods at night. So as you know, the drilling pipe is, is hollow steel pipe. And if they unload that or tubing, which is a smaller diameter steel piping that, that goes into the well for production, if they unload those materials at night and the pipes cling on each other, they can make a really loud, noisy environment. So we want to prohibit that at night. Want to prohibit engine idling or minimize engine idling. That would not only reduce off-site noise, it would also reduce off-site odors. Heavy trucks and deliveries prohibited at night except where unavoidable. That reduces nighttime noise at neighboring properties along the roads. 24-hour number posted for noise complaints, that would be an operator, an operator phone number. And the reason we want the citizens to have the operator's 24-hour phone number is so that the operators receive the complaints in real time. Noise limit, last, last line, noise limit more lenient where high ambient noise levels exist. Noise mitigations may be waived where high ambient noise levels are high. And that is actually unique to Arapahoe County. Our rules, no other jurisdictions, we did, we found no other jurisdictions with that rule. And then, oh, sure.
This is Jane. I have a question about the noise. You said it was your, the most frequent complaint. Well, what's, what's the repercussion if somebody calls and says it's noisy? Is there a sanction against the operator or what's the process?
Well, so currently we've, and for the last seven years, we've just been operating with the memorandum of understanding. And that really doesn't give us any authority to, to regulate noise. Before Senate Bill 181, local governments did not have control over surface operations. So I would get complaints and I would talk to the operators to see if there was something they could do different. And because we really didn't have the authority, sometimes they would skirt the issue or they would postpone some kind of remedy. And then they, you know, I'd keep calling them and saying, okay, you know, three days have gone by. okay, you know, three days have gone by, what have you done? And they'd say, well, we tried to do something, but it was going to impact the health and safety of the workers, so we didn't do that. And things would get dragged out for a while. And then finally, you know, on my fourth call or whatever, they would say, oh, we're going to be done in two days. And they weren't done in two days either. So we really feel that noise rules are an important part of our new regulations. But another tool that we've had and that I've used is to contact the COGCC inspector for Arapahoe County. And she has been really responsive and she goes out to sites at night when she does get noise complaints. And she has her own noise meters to measure the noise and to make sure that the operators are in compliance with the existing state rules. And recently, some citizens have just been contacting her directly. And then eventually she'll let me know that she's responded to three or four noise complaints in a period of a few days.
Okay, so you just try to get the noise to be changed, but there's no other, you can't yank the permit?
Right.
For noise, okay.
Yeah, once drilling starts, you know, we really can't shut it down and neither can the state. So it's been suggested in the past that operators could place hay bales between the pad and the neighbors that have been impacted with the noise. But hay bales, while they're really effective for absorbing noise, unfortunately, they're a safety hazard. They could catch fire, you know, and then people could, equipment could bump into them. It's a safety hazard. So that solution hasn't been used very much recently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I guess we're ready for slide 25. Yes, odor. Odor is also a complaint from nearby neighbors. They smell a hydrocarbon odor that is associated with the drilling mud because the drilling mud that they use when they drill past the aquifers is diesel-based commonly. So we have found out that operators can use low odor muds where there just aren't the same level of vapors that come off that mud. It's a little more expensive. But actually, it turns out it's actually effective to use because it saves the operators some money. Using this low odor mud, they can recirculate more of it. And this is a requirement in several other jurisdictions. And it's a standard procedure for one of our operators. So so far, we haven't heard any objections about requiring the use of low odor mud or other techniques. Also, they can cover their shale shakers. There's just other measures they can take to reduce odors. We want the operators to use closed-loop systems instead of open pits. When we developed the MOU about, it was signed a little bit over seven years ago now, one of the operators that was in the county at the time, who's no longer here, insisted that we have rules that allowed open pits. Turns out, when they finally drilled their well, they used a closed-loop system. Even our small operators have used closed-loop systems in the last seven years. And so they would circulate the fluids through closed tanks. And that greatly reduces the odors that come off the fluids. So we've heard no objections from industry yet on that drafted rule. Operators shall not plow hydrocarbon-bearing drill cuttings into the surface soil. That is something that has been done by operators historically. It saves them some money for transporting the drill cuttings off-site and for disposal. But when I spoke to the West Arapahoe Soil Conservation District, they told me that this is not a good practice in Arapahoe County. It may work in other areas, but in our soil, we just don't have the same amount of bacteria that eat hydrocarbons that are present in other places. So it was a strong recommendation from the West Arapahoe Soil Conservation District not to allow that practice. And Aurora has that in their proposed rules. And then operators shall proactively respond to and address odor complaints. We want quick resolution to odor complaints. On to lighting. These are measures that are pretty much enforced by all the operators, but we wanted to codify them. Lights directed downward and inward. Lights mounted on the inside of sound walls where sound walls are used. And full cutoff or shielded lighting. And those provisions are already in place or proposed in several other jurisdictions. And as I said, we haven't got any objections from industry yet. On to visual mitigation. So our proposed rules says that if a proposed pad is within a quarter mile of an occupied structure, platted lot or parcel of 40 acres or smaller, the pad must be designed with some form of visual mitigation. And the operator can choose the form of visual mitigation. No visual mitigation would be required for pads that are greater than a quarter mile from an occupied structure. And we believe that would offer relief for future development and it would mitigate the views from roads. And several other jurisdictions have that requirement. Visual mitigation installed within three months of well completion. This is something we are going to need to talk to industry about. We had strong objections about this drafted rule because they said that it makes no sense to install visual mitigation until they're done with interim reclamation. Interim reclamation is where they decrease the size of the pad from the large pad that's installed for drilling and fracking that's needed for all the traffic and all the equipment during drilling and hydraulic fracturing. That pad can be shrunk and the area that is outside of the shrinkage can be revegetated. And the operators are saying that it makes no sense to install visual mitigation when, until they've completed their interim reclamation. So we're going to sit down with industry on that one. Privacy fencing, colors and height. That would, we've drafted that into the rules. And we believe that hides the pad to a large extent. A lot of the equipment on the site, especially the separators, are tall enough where they would still show above the fencing, but it would allow some visual relief for nearby residents. And several other jurisdictions have that in their proposed or current rules. And then minimizing the size of tanks wherever possible. That language comes from Boulder, Broomfield, and Thornton. And if an operator was to install tanks that were 16 feet high instead of like 22 feet high, that would go a long way towards reducing the visual impact. But we realize there might be circumstances where that might not be possible for them. And then on to traffic. We want to restrict traffic during commuting and school bus hours. We feel that that would enhance safety and congestion. And it would avoid potential accidents with school buses. And several other jurisdictions have that in their rules, which they may have taken from us because we've got that in our MOU. Use pipelines wherever available. Pipelines are very expensive to install and have to be justified economically by some good-producing wells before an operator can install them. And then it takes them about two years to permit them. But we'd like them to use pipelines wherever possible because that takes heavy trucks off the road. And several other jurisdictions have that rule. And then in our MOU, we encouraged operators to use temporary water lines for drilling and fracking because those lines would take a portion of the heavy truck traffic off the road. The water trucks are very heavy trucks that take a toll on our roads. And several other jurisdictions have that, either in their current or proposed rules. And this is something that all of our operators have been doing for the past seven years. And then our last quality of life slide is wildlife, wetlands, riparian areas, and streams. We have a requirement that the operator must implement the recommendation of Colorado Parks and Wildlife unless waived in part by the Public Works Director. And that would be to protect wildlife and wildlife habitat. And that's actually, when I prepared this table a couple of months ago for a board study session, that was unique to Arapahoe County. But since then, COGCC has drafted a rule that's pretty much identical for this. But they're not going to go into rulemaking for wildlife until November. The second one is determine wetlands' boundaries using a professional wetland scientist and then indicate those boundaries on the plan set. This was something that I got from discussions with Colorado Parks and Wildlife as a way to preserve critical habitat. And Boulder has that in their rules. No construction within 300 feet of wetlands. That would help preserve wetlands, which are part of critical habitat. And it looks like the state is actually proposing a rule and discussing a rule for a setback of 500 feet from wetlands or riparian areas. Bore under defined bed and bank. So instead of building roads or pads over streams, we would require that the operators bore under them. No pads in riparian areas because those are critical to habitat. Bore under riparian areas for flow lines and pipelines. Use culverts for the crossing of riparian areas where the riparian areas are to be crossed by access roads. And fencing that bisect streams would be prohibited because wildlife use streams for migration. And as you can see, several of these were requirements that were requested by Colorado Parks and Wildlife. So we just, that was actually quality of life. So the slide is really mislabeled. Do any of you have questions about the draft quality of life rules? Or any changes that we should consider for the draft quality of life rules?
This is Jamie. I do have a question about what situations would be considered for a revocation of a permit?
Examples would be if they constructed an access road that went through a riparian area without installing culverts. If they repeatedly did not come into compliance with either ours or the state's noise rules, basically, it would be compliance issues.
So I heard you say that once they start drilling, you know, in the past, under regulations that were captured in a memorandum of understanding, you know, you pointed out that there were noise violations. You kind of have to let them go. So that, to me, would not be one of your grounds for, one of the grounds for revocation. And I have to ask, if you're going to revoke somebody's permit, do they have an opportunity for a hearing, at least administratively?
Yes, they would have the opportunity for hearing. But as far as noise, what I was meaning to state is that under our current system, where we regulate through the MOU, we have no teeth as a local jurisdiction. So we were not able to regulate noise. But under our drafted rules, if approved by the board, we would have the legal standing to regulate noise.
Okay, okay, that answers that question. I just wanted to make sure that the permit holder would have an opportunity to be heard. You know, little due process is always a good thing in life.
Yes.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Latsis, sorry. I had a follow-on question to Jamie's question regarding things like odor and noise and, you know, and rule violations. Are you going to quantify, you know, what would result in a significant violation so that operators would know ahead of time? Let's say if I get 10 noise violations in 30 days, then I'm going to get pulled in front of the county. You know, are you going to have like some specifics around what rule violations are, you know, maybe more serious than others? Or how many chances do you get before you get in trouble? You know, so are you going to basically put some criteria around that?
As they're currently drafted, we haven't. Bob, could you chime in on this?
Well, largely, the enforcement will have to be through zoning enforcement. And under zoning enforcement, per state statute, we have to, before we can file any action in court to enforce it, we have to give them a 10-day notice and opportunity to correct the problem. So in that regard, yes, you know, they wouldn't suddenly, you know, find themselves with a summons to, you know, pulled into court, you know, because they had a noise complaint against them.
Sure, but I mean, to keep it all in an equal playing field, are you going to say, look, if you hit a certain threshold of noise complaints, you're going to get a warning? And if you continue to get noise complaints, then you get a second warning? And, you know, at what point will it result in disciplinary action? Because I can see if you said, you know, one guy was a bad operator and somebody else is a bad operator, but they did different things or had different levels of compliance, you know, that would give them a precedent issue like, well, hey, you didn't bust that guy for 10 violations, but you busted me, you know? So I'm just curious if you're going to spell it out and say, these are the penalties for violating these rules, and this is how we're going to do it?
Yeah, that's something we actually should take a closer look at because just from my perspective alone, zoning enforcement's not the most effective. It kind of depends on staff and time and, you know, ability to take cases to court and the whole bit. If there is a better way to do it, I would certainly argue for it.
Well, I would support doing that, laying out criteria. Just, I think it keeps, it also tells the operators what's important to the county. If you say these type of rule violations are going to result in some problems for you, then they might try to avoid them.
That's actually a really timely discussion because we have an internal meeting on Thursday morning to try to tighten up some of our rules.
Oh, great.
I also think that guidance, to Bob's point, and Catherine raises a really good point, is something that would be appreciated, really, by the operators. I mean, I think guidance is important in order to achieve compliance, right? So that you're not reactionary. To Bob's point, if you have to go enforce standards via zoning actions, it may not be the best way because it happens, you know, at the tail end or when things have gotten beyond the point of no return, right? So guidance at the initial phase is just a lot more useful all around, I think.
I agree. Are there any other questions or suggestions?
Financial penalties if people don't comply with the county's rules?
We have not drafted anything along those lines. We got some initial direction from the board that we should avoid that because the state already has financial penalties in place. We've heard that from citizens that the state's financial penalties that they currently have in place are pretty minor. However, I do think that the COGCC is also taking a look at However, I, I do think that the COGCC is also taking a look at, at penalties as part of their rulemaking process.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Brockelman. Since sound needs, or seems to be a very critical element to all of this operation, would it be where you could require a, what should I say? A compliance report from the operator? Let's say on a weekly base or a monthly base, something like that? Because they could certainly set up meters around site and capture that kind of data and then furnish the report back to the county. Would that be something that could help us out?
The, the guidance we've gotten from the board on, on requiring multiple reports is they feel like that would be an unfair burden on industry. But yeah, this is something we can bring up at future meetings.
Diane, this is Commissioner Savin. I just, I had a question that's on a kind of broader level. And that is, and you may or may not know the answer, but since you've been studying this so closely, I just wondered what the forecast is or the prediction for the growth of this industry in general. I'm thinking that because I'm wondering, is this going to be something that we as a county are going to be dealing with more and more over many, many years? Or do you, or, or just the literature indicate that it's more of a transitional issue? I just wonder if you could weigh in on that and give me some context?
It's really up in the air right now. Industry is saying that if the county adopts strong rules and the state adopts a lot of the rules that they're currently discussing amongst themselves, the, the new full-time commissioners at the COGCC. Industry is saying that they could potentially be driven out of the state by really strict rules. But right now, the price of oil is really low due to a lack of demand. Or at, at least, I haven't actually checked the price in the, in the last week or so. But the, the price crashed when the pandemic first hit. It just wasn't the demand. So that's impacted the fact that we haven't received any permit applications recently. But as, as far as the longevity of, of these sites, well, before I, before I talk about that, we, we have one operator, Creston Peak Resources, who has stated that if the price of oil is $40 a barrel or more, that they would be able to make a profit and they would proceed on development. However, larger companies, their predecessor, Conoco, would have needed the price of oil to be $50 or $55 a barrel at least for them to proceed with slick drilling. And, and then I just want to mention that right now, it's projected that these, the wells, the shale wells in the Niobrara Formation could last 20 years. But there's no real data on how long a shale well lasts because the very first shale wells were installed in North Dakota in the Bakken Formation, which is also a shale. And those wells were installed the early part of the 2000s, I would say. They, they might have started 2003, 2004. So we don't have a lot of data on how long these wells will last. But we know that these facilities are, are something that are going to be in a neighborhood or in an area for quite a while. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks a lot, I appreciate that.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, so here's an update on our schedule and outreach process. In September, we published our draft regulations on our oil and gas website. And we conducted stakeholder outreach with four groups. We combined all our citizen groups into one citizen meeting. In our industry meeting, we met with operators and midstream companies, which are pipeline companies, and their consultants and industry organizations such as the American Petroleum Institute and the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. We met with developers and builders and combined that meeting with chambers of commerce. And we met with state agencies. And that included Colorado Parks and Wildlife, COGCC, CDPHG, and the State Land Board. So we did all of that in September. And then in October, on the 7th, we conducted a virtual public meeting for our oil and gas rules. And tonight, we're, we're here at the planning commission study session. Earlier today, we had a board of county commissioners study session also, which was, I believe, the 11th study session that we've done with the board since we started our rules process. And then on November 10th, that's the, the planned date for the planning commission public hearing. And on November 24th, that's the planned date for the VOCCC public hearing and adoption of rules. And both of those hearings, you know, would have, allow public comment. The survey is like the third to last opportunity for all stakeholders to participate and provide comments. And then the two hearings. I have to say though, that the November 10th and November 24th hearing dates are not entirely set in stone. We're going to see when we meet with the board for another, another study session a week from today, if, if we want to hold firm on those dates. And we do encourage all of you to also take the survey. The survey has questions about the draft rules. And then it has comment boxes where you can insert comments about that draft rule. And then at the end of the survey, there's a comment box where you can summarize your comments or provide your specific comments in, in that box. And the survey closes on October 28th, but we really appreciate getting comments sooner so that we can bring those comments to the board sooner.
Thank you, Diane. You've given us a lot of food for thought. I, some of the commissioners have already asked questions. Are there any additional questions at this time from anyone? Well, hearing none, we will say thank you and conclude our study session. So thank you, Diane.
Thank all of you very much.
And our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for November 10th, which we have been advised will be a public hearing. Are there any additional staff announcements?
Certainly, just a reminder that if anyone who's happening to watch this broadcast wants to comment on the oil and gas regulations, they can visit arapahogov.com/oilandgas, all one word, and view the draft regulations and take that survey. We'd really appreciate the feedback. And that's the only announcement that I have.
Well, hearing none and hearing no further questions, I announce that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, all.